I remember the tune, I don't remember all the words.
Okay, Corey, how are you? Doesn't look like you're too battered.
Yeah, it is what it is.
The new club doesn't sing. Are you gonna sing for us, Earl?
He already did.
I didn't know I was gonna miss a show.
It's a good show. He's fine.
Okay.
Are you going, sir?
Hi, how are you?
Entertained a motion to come back from closed session?
Don't move.
Motion in support, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried. Motion to approve the minutes of the March study session.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Questions? Corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Upper Funding Facilities Jackson Youth Home Emergency Generator. The Administrator, please, and his lovely staff.
Lovely staff.
I love it. Thank you.
Good morning. Motion is requested to approve the low bid for providing and installing a new emergency generator at the Jackson County Youth Home in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars by Cochrane Electric of Jackson, Michigan.
Questions, Commissioners? Go ahead.
Only question is, is Cochrane the only company we looked into, or do we look into some others?
Negative. If we put it out, Hurst Electric was too busy at the moment, and A Plus Electric was the second bid behind Cochrane. Pretty, pretty close, but they both contribute to our bidding all the time.
Thanks. And is this a state bid price? I mean, is this equivalent to that or less? My deal, or, did we get them to look at it, Mike, or is it below the numbers or whatever?
Definitely fair market value. I mean, we're, it's competitively bid, and the generator comes from locally sourced Superior, who has always met our needs.
Yes, sir.
Is this such an emergency that we have to do it at study session rather than at next week's meetings or the board meeting?
We can see it all the way through if we had to.
Says action.
Yeah, I thought it was an action item.
No, but then it says full board at the end.
Yes, it says full board.
Full transparency.
So we're not active yet. That's, that's the only thing I was curious about. Thank you.
Commissioner Bear. Good morning. I got, comparing the two contracts. One says that they excluded any costs associated with plan review process with the recommended supplier contractor. Will there be plan review costs incurred?
No. No, at minimum, he'll have a permit cost, which is included, but plan review was done in the first phase a few years ago as far as the engineering went.
Okay. Just curious whether you're gonna be coming back for that, but, good. Okay, that's all I had.
Any other? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions. My first question was already, was already asked. My second question was, the current generator that we have now, is it completely gone? Is it not working at all, or?
It's still working, but it's a gamble. It's, it's on its last legs, and we've had a couple minor repairs to it just to hump along to get through this process. So, in the event that this one were to fail again, then our facilities team is on call, who would come out with our backup generator that we received from JDOT not long ago, hook it up and get them going again.
Okay.
But we do not want to operate this way as, going forward, though.
Okay. And then, so let me ask it this way. Can we gimp along for the rest of the month?
I believe so. And we have to, process-wise, but when we go, if we get approval, and then by the time it's awarded and ordered and everything gets along, it's gonna be a few months, probably.
Okay. My last question is, when we are able to get everything in, and can move forward with the new generator, our current generator, would we be able to sell it for parts or anything like that?
I believe so. Everything has a value.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing further.
To answer that as a broader question, Rick, you dispose of things on eBay, correct? And have, at least in the past?
It's done through our GovDOT deals.
Right.
Yep. So it's put out there and, and all of our merch, all of our old products is put that way.
Okay.
Further questions? Did you have one, Rodney?
Yeah, the biggest part of this process is it's not so much if the old one failed, it's not large enough to do the job. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yep. That's, that's a, that's a big part of this whole thing.
Overtaxing the unit before it even gets running.
Correct. And for a 24/7 institution, we don't, we wanna be capable of running in the event of emergency.
Can you tell me what the current size of the unit is now?
It's roughly seventy kilowatt, and we're going to one fifty.
Doubling the size, okay.
The wifi will work, is what you're saying.
It will. That's on my show, though.
Further questions? Okay. Look forward to seeing you in committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Overton, number seven. Twenty twenty-two master plan.
Good morning, everyone. The Jackson County Planning Commission has developed a full draft of the Jackson County Master Plan. According to the, to meet the requirements of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, it has to come before the, the county board for release for, for public comment. So we are not asking for approval of the document at this point, but just for release of the document to go out to, for, for comment. Then it would go before a public hearing, before the Planning Commission, approval, adoption by them, and then come back to you for, for adoption. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Good morning, Grant.
Good morning.
In this version of our master plan, it's not a redlined document, so I can't tell what is deleted from the previous one, what's added in this one. How do I determine what is changed from our previous one?
It's completely brand-new document. It's the first master plan that, that the Jackson County Planning Commission has put together.
Okay. Thanks.
I don't have a question, but more of a comment, and told you during the Planning Commission. Thanks a lot for your work. Very thorough document. If anybody was ever looking to move to Jackson County, it has just about everything they need to know, whether schools, recreational activities, and we appreciate your work very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commission? And this will work its way through the committee process, also after the public comment period, Mike?
It'll come back to the board, yeah.
Okay. So this is gonna be back before you a couple of times, folks. And is it on display digitally, I know, but is a hard copy at the district library, or where, sir?
We aren't at that point. What we're asking for you to do this month, going through General Government's Committee and then the full board in, in, on, on the eighteenth, is to release the document for, for, for comment. At that point in time, it'll go on, we'll, we'll release it for, for, for comment and have it posted and, and have it at the library and, and that type of thing.
If I may. Yes, sir. The, just to add on to what Grant was saying there. The idea here is that the board would spend the next, you know, three meetings reviewing, getting your questions answered about the document. That's a, that way you're comfortable with the document for the county, going, and then it'll go out to, you know, the whole county, and it's gonna go to all the townships. Is that what it's doing, and so forth?
It, it's released to, I just wanna get, it'll be released to each municipality in Jackson County, to each municipality adjacent to Jackson County, to the Region Two Planning Commission, to each contiguous county, to Jackson County, to the Public Utility Railway Company and public transit agencies operating within the county, as well as to JC dot N and, and M dot.
So it's gonna be released to a whole lot of people, and they're gonna read it, hopefully, and make comments, suggestions back, and then ultimately that will come back to this body.
Correct.
And that's when you guys would be asked to approve it.
To, to adopt it, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. Grant, I received an email yesterday with this, with this master plan attached, asking for review and comment. So is this already officially out?
No, it is not. I don't know where that would have come from.
Okay, well, I can show you. If you're, if you're interested after the meeting, I'll show you where I got this from. It was sent out to a hundred and, over a hundred people.
Yeah, Region Two Planning, it would have been distributed to, and to all supervisors and mayors and-
Villages.
And everyone like that. It's the beginning of it with anticipation that we would approve it today or not approve it. All we were doing is making us, us aware of it and beginning the question process. So, yeah. So you're on Region Two Planning, so you would have gotten a copy, and then you're a county commissioner. So you would have been flagged twice to get it.
Okay.
Any further comments? Look forward to seeing you for the next month, Grant.
Thank you.
Do we have any other items to come before the commission? With none seen, we'll go on to the second round of public comment. It has the crickets chirp. Commissioner comments? Any? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you, Chairman. I mentioned this a couple times over the last month. Our contract, the contract, I'm sorry, the contract between the county and Consumers Power for the rental of our towers. I've gone back and again reviewed the tape recording, listening to statements that people made. One question that I would like to ask is that, per, per our minutes of that meeting, we did change, we did make two changes to this agreement. So when I'm in that April twenty, twenty twenty-one board docs, I can find the contract of participation. But the changes that were made by motion and approved are not incorporated in this. So if we have a, a, I guess that's a question I'd like to know. If we have a document for review and approval, and we make a motion and approve changes to that document, when does that document actually get altered, updated, consistent with the, with the motion and approval? Can somebody give me a general answer on that before I go into my other questions?
Sure. So if we have an agreement with a body or an entity that the board changes, you know, during the meeting, before execution, we would change the agreement and then execute it with the entity. And then it would be in our files.
You, you alter the document based on the motion approved. You alter that document when?
Obviously, before we execute it.
Okay. Please, give me a copy of that document that was executed, because the only copy that is available on board docs does not include the changes that the board voted on.
Yeah, we have probably tens of thousands of files of documents that are not on board docs, 'cause every time we have a contractor, an agreement, or something like that, that would be executed, or an addendum or something like that. It's in a file. The clerk maintains, you know, all files, but it does necessarily reflect on the board docs. There's no methodology where we bring back the document to put it in, to put it in board docs, per se. There's no space on board docs for that. So when you make a change to something, if you change a word, we would change the word, and then if, that document would be filed in our file system, but it wouldn't be supported on the document that someone's looking on board docs, 'cause they would see just the document that we brought and then the change that you made.
Okay, so if a member of the public wants to view a document, and that document, there was a motion made to alter it, the motion was approved. They go into board docs for that meeting date, and they pull up the document. It's the original one. It does not include the changes. So where does the public go to find the, the, the new document as approved by this board?
They would have to submit a FOIA request for the document, 'cause it's not listed on, online.
Okay. Then I guess I'm going to request that we review and hopefully alter that, that methodology that we're currently finding. If I wanna go back and find a, if a member of the public, I can only get through board docs. The document that I look up and find on board docs, I would hope it would be the current one as the board approved it, and this one is not. So I would like to reconsider that. Because when somebody's making the minutes for that meeting, they could just go back into that document and make it as approved by the board that day.
Well, actually, to do that, you're altering the, the record of events of what happened. So I wouldn't recommend that. What you would, at most, do would be to add the doc, add additional documents. So you got the document original, you got the adjustment that the board made through a motion and vote, and it's therefore reflected in the minutes. And then you're suggesting that we go back and add another copy of that, call it final, and put it in board docs. That's what you're suggesting, I believe, Ryan?
Yes. And it would be good to have this document, this contract of participation, which we changed that word "contract" to "agreement." We did that by motion. So to have the, have two documents in there, one that's listed as originally proposed, have a second document in there titled "As Approved by the Board." It's altered and approved. That way anybody could see what's the current contract, and they can see what was altered from the previous one. To me, that's just part of a honest and open government. Let them see what these things are. And then relative to that-
I can, if I may, I, I'll discuss that with the county clerk and see what we can do there, if that's amenable or not. So, we'll let you know.
Okay. Now, I don't expect to necessarily solve this today, but I think you know what I'm getting at, and I, I think we need to address this. I still want to go back to the, it says in here that the, this, this agreement is effective upon the day and date last signed and executed by the duly authorized representatives of the parties to this agreement, and shall last for one year from the date of execution. So the, according to Article Two Terms of Agreement, that original contract is up, and we need to reevaluate it. This is a point that I'd argued a year ago, because that same paragraph at the bottom contradicts it. The last sentence says, "Agreement shall automatically renew for another twelve months' term unless the entity, unless and until either party acts to terminate it at the conclusion of any successive one-year term." So under paragraph one, I want to review this, or under sentence one. Under the last sentence, sentence three. Sure. Right. And the statement as it stands has contradicting sentences in it. That, Article Two Terms of Agreement, the first sentence contradicts the third sentence. If I may, Tony, the third sentence then supersedes the first sentence because it states that it renews itself automatically. And that's how contracts work. You spell out the order of action within the document. So it doesn't contradict it. All it does is take action unless somebody brings it up. And are you make, are you making a motion for review? I would like to make a motion for review of the contract. Then we need to do it not under Commissioner Comment. You need to do it under Old Business, sir. Yes. Then we'll wait for Old Business. All right. So can, I would then request that that's be put on our study session agenda, so I can make a motion and it can be discussed. You can do it Monday in your committee. Okay. I will do it during that. Make a motion there, and according to the policies of the board, that committee then may refer it to the Administrator Controller's Office for review and then bring it back to the full board, but if you don't have support for your motion, it doesn't go anywhere. You understand that? Yes, I do. Okay. So I'm gonna address my fellow commissioners. If you want to go back to the April twenty, twenty twenty-one meeting, listen to the video, you can jump twenty minutes into it. That's where the questioning starts. Our administrator clearly said, when I asked him, how was this, the cost for this annual rental, how was it determined? He said, he took the total cost for operating that many radios. He subtracted out of it the five hundred thousand dollars that consumer was, Consumers Power was investing, capital investment, and that resulted in twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars. So the actual rental cost, according to our administrator, is five hundred and twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars. That was last year. Last year's the electrical costs and other costs. So the first contract that we gave them, we did not charge consumers the actual true rental rate of five hundred and twenty-three thousand. They were given a credit for their capital investment. So the twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollar contract is, rental contract is not appropriate. What we did last year was we took five hundred thousand dollars worth of taxpayer money, and we turned that into a credit for Consumers Power. And if we don't change this now, we will be giving consumers another five hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer monies, since the actual cost is five hundred and twenty-three dollars, four hundred and, five hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars. I do not think Consumers is a charitable organization, that we need to be giving them taxpayer money. And if you doubt my words, go back in and listen to the tape. You can listen to it over and over again. The words are there. Tony, there's no doubting you. We don't doubt you, sir. You don't have to accuse us of anything. No, it wasn't an accusation. I'm just saying, I want some help here from my fellow commissioners. We do not need to be giving five hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money to Consumers Power. And if we renew this contract at only twenty-three thousand four hundred ninety dollars, we will be doing that for a second time. In your opinion, Administrator Overton.
Tony, I believe you're in error. That contract is very much similar to the contract we have with, like, the ME's office. What Consumers did was invested five hundred thousand dollars of their money into equipment on radio towers, thereby expanding our capacity with their investment. What we did in that contract was say, we will give you a return on your investment of three percent. And we, so we subtract three percent, as if they were getting interest on their five hundred thousand dollars annually from that. So there is no five hundred thousand dollar credit. It is three percent is which, a fair market value of an interest rate. And it's the same as we do for, like, like I said, the ME's office. We, the county, invested, I don't remember the number, but hundreds of thousands of dollars into building an ME's office out on Shanna Road. And we allow, or I shouldn't say allow, we have an agreement with Hillsdale and Lenawee County to use that space. And they pay us three percent on our investment in that, since they did not participate in the original investment. It's the same kind of contract. There was no five hundred thousand. The price would never be five hundred thousand.
Okay, your words today are not consistent with your words one year ago. The evidence of that is, listen to the videotape. That's why I'm asking every one of you. Don't, don't just believe this because I'm saying it. Believe it because you listened to that tape, you hear it for yourself, and you hear the words that were spoken, and then you will know the answer that was given one year ago is not consistent with the answer just given now.
Mr. Chair, at this point, I'd like to call a point of order.
Well, what we've agreed to in the past is that under Commissioner comment, commissioners will be allowed to speak. I do apologize, there's no, there's no point of order. I will ask Commissioner Bear, have you wrapped up your discussion on this, sir? You've asked us five times to review something. Are you done?
One last sentence. Fellow commissioners, I'd like your help.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Kennedy?
I, I just request that the administrator possibly forward us the information so we can view it for ourselves. And by that, I mean the numbers, because I hear what Tony's saying, and I think if we can look at it through statistics, through the, the numbers on a spreadsheet, it might be easier to understand. But, and I'll let you, go ahead, Mike.
Any further comment?
Yeah, that's not a problem. I'll pull out the paperwork that we used last year and bring it back, or send it out to you in an update or something.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments? Entertained a motion to adjourn? We have a motion, motion and support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, duly carried.